They're very concerned about it.
Call me in order.
Hotter than usual.
We stand flag salute, I'm sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Most approve the agenda with no additions?
I move that we approve the agenda.
I'll second it. Any other discussion? Not all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent agenda minutes of the 26th work session, regular meeting and wire payments of $8,980.83. I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
The move is second. Any other discussion? Not all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Commissioner comments? Lynn, you want to?
Well, I kind of, you know, covered that other, but I'll just say briefly, it was a great opportunity to learn more about Fort Riley and what the soldiers actually endure. One of the statistics that kind of jumped out at me, 40% of the soldiers in the Dagger Brigade out there are between ages 17 and 25. And yet, there's a great confidence that they have in these soldiers and the development and organizational part of it. And one of the things that they were doing was simulating some conflict where they would sometimes come under enemy fire or something disruptive. They have lasers that they use and they wear, they're called mils. And so that laser picks up if someone happens to be shot or if they have to shoot a civilian. It also measures in the conflict that they have whether the artillery could penetrate, you know, certain kinds of vehicles and so on. And so they tape all of it and they have extensive records and so they're able to go ahead and analyze it after the fact. I mean, it's almost, you might say like a, you know, K-State football team, the coaches look at all that film afterwards and, you know, and while they're watching it, they also analyze it after the fact. So it was very intense in that regard. The other thing is, we went into some of the areas that were classified and they had maps made out of the whole area. They had everything in quadrants and sometimes they would just set up rocks in these quadrants, rid of piece of plywood and sand. And so they actually had a visual of what the terrain looked like so they could visually look at that. And then a lot of these soldiers were on computers and, I mean, you know, you can tell that they probably grew up with that and played a few games in their past, but, I mean, it was kind of made an easy transition because, I mean, that's, really, nobody was standing around except the group of us that were watching. And so it was a tremendous opportunity and, you know, really gives you a great appreciation for what our soldiers are doing and the sacrifice that they make. The other thing is, I know the rest of you will comment on this, we were at a meeting yesterday over at Salina on bridges and highways and that was a very helpful meeting and Brad was there also. And Sherry Massey, you know, was one of the presenters and did a great job, I thought. So that's all I have.
Lauren?
Yeah, kind of the same thing as with our meeting yesterday and I think it's always helpful for us to be able to find out the information at that meeting and, like I say, Sherry did an excellent job in her presentations and how GIS is helpful for Roden Bridge information and also other areas that we use GIS in that most people don't realize that we do. And so I think, like I say, Brad is secondary treasurer of that organization there and so we had a big part in that yesterday. I guess also like to mention that I'm thankful for any rain that we do get. It's very beneficial that we keep getting some rain and it does tremendously affect the economy of our county if we have a good week crop and, like I say, it all hinges on the amount of rain that we can get to do that, so.
Did you get any last night?
I did and I can't remember if I had, we had a shower of 20 hundreds a while back. I'm not sure if I dumped that, but I think we got at least a half inch out there.
We had more thunder in town and just splashed a little bit on the pavement.
It was more than the 20, more than the 20 hundreds that we'd been getting before. So I think this will get us by for a little while.
On our work session, Marion County, two commissioners near Roden Bridge, superintendent was in this morning, we've got a bridge down there that's on the county line, it's a fracturing bridge. It's not been failed yet, it's nine ton, 10 ton rating?
Five.
Five ton rating.
Posture for three.
Yeah, posture for three, that's right. They're wanting to partner with us, see about replacing it. It hadn't been declared unsafe yet, discussing that with them. Russ Wilkins was in with our 911, was in, gave his report about burn permits and the volume of calls they get. Last Thursday after the meeting, I went to Beloit North Central Regional Planning Commission. The biggest thing that was on the agenda was fees. They're wanting to, there's a threshold, if you would get up to $60,000 in fees qualifies you for more money and right now our fees from everybody's around $45,000. 2008, Sling County and Salina was paying more, now they're paying the same as everybody else and there's, Doug's going to have a meeting within the 14th with Sling County and City of Salina to see what they're comfortable with. We don't want to, like, keep them in the group, but I think the gentleman from Sling County feels that they should probably be paying more than, you know, 50,000 population. We're the next biggest with 20,000. That was one of the discussions items. Next one, we'll be canvassing the election the 9th, Barb?
I'll be, okay. It's the 13th.
13th we'll be canvassing the election. How is the advanced voting going, Barb?
We have had, as of last night, we had 93 walk-in voters and we have mailed out 189 and of those, 68 have been returned.
Well, that's all I have. Let's see, we got two minutes. Doug, anything? Or, yeah, anything? Nothing?
No, no, thank you.
Well, you want to go ahead and start your?
I can work fast if we don't get here.
Okay.
You had indicated you want to do a road tour, would be 15th working for you guys?
Yep.
And you tell me what time you'd like to start, would start 9:00 in the morning?
You would want to start earlier than that so we can get back done earlier or?
I'd rather start earlier and get done earlier.
Start at 1:00, it's at 6:00 maybe.
Well, okay.
We're at 8:00 here.
I need, I need to check, I have a juvenile detention meeting on Wednesday and I'm not sure if that 15th is when that would be or not.
What, Thursday in the morning or what day?
Yeah, it's in the morning, it's from 10 to 12.
If it's that day, we could go the following week too.
Yeah.
Well, I need to check, it's usually around the middle of the month, it depends on, I think it's the 2nd.
The 2nd, why doesn't it be the 8th, so?
I'm not sure if it's, it might be the 8th.
But if you want to let, let me know and then I'll know.
I'll let you know.
Schedule accordingly. I'm assuming the 22nd would work for the other two, for Lynn and Craig.
Yeah, yeah.
If we need to do that.
Oh, also, also, why would, for, 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 for the break for the, still on, who wants, who's going to attend the Potawatomi County jail tour?
The 21st.
Yeah, I'm planning on attending. I'd like to go back and see the problems and issues they've had since they've been opening year. So if any of us, the other two are going to go, we need to?
Yeah, initially, I just assumed it would be Craig since he's on the committee unless you guys want to go again, so.
Well, I've been there twice, I don't know.
Are there, and I think I would probably decline too since I've been there, but are there others that will probably go with you, Craig?
Well, Judge Sexton's going, Senator McDonald, who else is going?
The members on the, kind of our stakeholder meeting, which would be representatives in each department, Russ, District Court, Sheriff, Court Services, County Attorney, so. Which if you want to represent, I'll break and let you in.
Okay. We have a public hearing, called public hearing for the road vacates, the Banner Township session. Do you want to highlight that, Brad?
Certainly. This was a petition you received from Jill and Lisa Harbaugh, residents in Elmo, and they own two parcels there in town. And the request was to vacate the right of way which was originally laid out as a street and an alley that rules through their property. As you know, the streets and alleys that we're talking about were never developed in Elmo and they would like to have those vacated so that they can then do a combination and have it all as one parcel. So we did send out, after the petition was received, was scheduled to public hearing, we sent out notice to the township board members and everybody that lives within a, I believe in this 3 or 5 mile radius, I'm not sure what GIS did for us, but I have had no comments back to me at all and even township night, Banner Township guys didn't mention anything, so they've had the opportunity. But it, we see no negative impact, it goes along, coincides with what we've been wanting to do, is clean up some of those areas as well. So the staff recommendation for our, would be to approve it.
So there's not really anybody, it's not blocking anybody else to get to their property now?
The only persons that affects are the, are in Elmo, is the owners of the property.
Any public comment? If not, I make, make motion, we, oh, we have to go, I have to, you have your right.
Go back in.
Yeah, and I'll, we'll give the legal description. It's an alley located in Block 22 and the portion of Second Street that lies between Block 22 and Block 27 in Banner City, Elmo in Dixon County and that all eastward and egresses and egresses for utilities that our presence shall be preserved. Declare the public meeting closed?
I'll second it.
Move second? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Now, resolution, I'll make motion, resolution 040215, the vac, resolution vacating public right of way in Banner City, Banner in Elmo.
I'll move that we adopt the resolution 040215.
Second. Move to second. Any discussion? Not all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Brad, you want to continue on?
Certainly. We've been notified, two of our employees in the appraisal's office are going to be retiring, which we're happy for both of them, although we hate to miss good employees, but we have, they'll be retiring here in a couple of months. We, with that objection, we would like to get those two jobs posted, one of them is for the assistant appraiser, the other one is for the personal property clerk, both of which need to be filled out. So we'll be taking the necessary steps to process those positions and try to fill those. Hopefully in time where the two people leaving will be able to work with the new person for a week or two to get a little bit of on-the-job training, so. We also, it's approaching that time where in the past we've, where you remember, it might have been before your time, but we had reduced the staff in the appraisal's office a number of years ago by two people. And to help alleviate that issue, we, every summer, we have one or two part-time people that we hire. Last year, we had two that we hired for a couple of months in part-time capacity. This year, Bruce feels like he can get by with one person and one of the two college kids that worked for us last year is interested this year, so we'll utilize him again and save a little bit of the training and familiarization that we otherwise have to do. But that saves us having a full composition of benefits that we fill a year out, so. I kind, during work session, we've kind of gone through the information that I'd found out from Julie Bowers and the historical bridge at 3,200. I won't go into a lot more detail on that, but essentially what we have discovered is that there is a nonprofit group out of Iowa that is willing to come out and do an assessment on that historical bridge and give us some options, if you will, as to what could be done in the future. It would kind of lay the groundwork for us as to what direction we want to go, be it a grant to get it back open or a grant to make it a walking bridge or whether it just needs to come down, you know, a number of options. But at any rate, what I would like to do is to contract with their organization, the quote that she's given me is $8,000 to come out and do that assessment. They are rather busy right now, but she felt like the 300 could get out of here sometime in the next couple of months or extend it along the weekend and do that for us and get us the results back within three to four weeks. I kind of, I thought $8,000 is a pretty reasonable amount to get that assessment. This is the only group of people that I'm aware of, that we've been able to find through our research in the nation that does this type of assessment and they specialize on historical bridges and have a passion for that, so. Without any objection, you know, I don't know if we have any other ideas, but that would be what I would recommend, the avenue we go, to at least take the first step, otherwise we really don't know what our options are. So I'm open to the input from you guys.
Lauren, Lynn, want to table it for a while?
Well, yeah, I guess I'm still kind of undecided. I don't know for sure. Like I say, if we're really committed that we want to do something with that bridge, you know, I think this is the step we need to take, but, I'm saying, Craig knows more about than I do, but from a historical standpoint, you know, I do appreciate those things and what, what I'm not certain is whether that location where it's at will be something that's going to draw many people to even look at it without doing a lot of roadwork to get people there and knowing that it's even there and, so I don't know.
Have you been able to share the information with some of the neighbors that had inquired about the bridge and so on to see what their level of interest, because it seemed like there were a couple of options and one even included possibly moving the bridge to another end. You know, that's, that may be a direction that they aren't even interested in, but, but I, and I realize additional information from a group like this might help us procure some funds later, but unless we're really going to go down that pathway, you know, I'd kind of hesitate just to spend that money and then find out kind of what we already know. And so maybe just a little bit more time to think about it and get some feedback. Want hurt to push it back a while longer before we make a decision.
I guess I'd go, I would rather think about it for a week, I think.
That's fine.
And what was the website you had on that?
Workin Bridges, W-O-R-K-I-N Bridges. And I will, if you Google or search that YouTube, there's about a 45-minute documentary that they put out, this organization has a script. And I will send you the link directly to that.
Yeah, I want to send you that.
It's really pretty interesting to sit and watch. I found it very interesting and intriguing, but, you know, the one thing, one thing we know for certain is we have a bridge and it's not going away and it's historical, so that limits our options on it. I did communicate with Clark and Audrey about this information, I guess Tuesday, yes, because.
I talked to Audrey last night, yeah.
And sent that link to them and they were both, thought that was a good first step to see what our, what our options would be. The real challenge is finding someone like this organization that specializes in historical bridges of that nature that can tell us, you know, what our options are, so.
Yeah, and I don't mind putting it off, but you have the, you know, we've got, the engineers have closed it for us, but this company, group gives us the options, you know, until they come out and look at it, I'd want more information from them than, you know, I'd want to pay them to get more information so I know what to do, but I have no more.
Yeah, we would get a scope of work from them, much detail.
But, I mean, you got to pay for that.
Waiting a little bit would be a good idea, give you the opportunity to watch that video and give you a little bit better feeling about what they do.
So you're thinking an agenda item for next week on it or is, or do you think of, or?
I'd really, if we could put it off for a couple of weeks, we can.
Bridges are going anywhere, so.
But it's, I guess, you know, it all depends on the, if we start down this road, we want to make sure that we can get some money, historical grant money to help with the project too.
But we've also got to do the assessment before we do that.
Well, probably.
I mean, that's.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Yeah, it's a chicken and egg.
It's, there's no doubt in my mind, the only way we're going to do anything up there would be with a historical grant. We simply don't have the funding for something like that, given the other priorities we've got. But to be eligible for that and give the foundation, we need to put in a viable application, we have to do the assessment. This, and another thing, just to add to it, this group has worked with our state historical group, they're very familiar with the staff there, they're working on a project in Bourbon County at Fort Scott right now, and so I think that's a plus as well, that, you know, their work speaks for themselves, so. Watch the video and we'll take it up in a couple of weeks to search today.
I still think ideally if that, if that bridge could be located, relocated to a place that had a lot of traffic at, at a historical park or at the historical hearing, you know, it would, you'd be able to have more people take advantage of, and it'd be something that would be preserved enough that, you know, people 100 years ago, there might not be very many of those bridges that they'd be able to go look at.
We talked about that when we met with Clark, Audrey and John and Warren about the possibility of that being the scope of our project, ultimate goal is maybe moving that structure into town somewhere in the historical society because of its value. It is, for the people that are here, it is the third oldest bridge in the state of Kansas, it is the oldest bridge in Dickinson County, so it, I don't know what the other two bridges are or where they're at, but as, as they either become gone or for whatever reason, it may well be the oldest one in the state someday, but it does have some really big significance, so.
And I noticed here, I should go ahead with the proclamation for the celebrating 47 years of fair housing. Anybody here for the fair housing?
I don't believe so.
I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Celebrating 47 years of fair housing, County of Dixon, whereas the Congress of the United States passed the Civil Rights Act of 1968, of which title eight declared the law of the land would now guarantee the rights of equal housing opportunities and whereas County of Dixon is committed to the intent, mission and intent of Congress to provide fair and equal housing opportunities for all. And today, we may, many realty companies and associations support fair housing laws. And whereas the fair housing groups and the, you know, big department of housing and urban development have, over the years, received thousands of complaints alleging illegal housing discrimination and found too many that have proven upon investigation to be violation of the fair housing laws and whereas equal housing opportunities is a condition of life in our country and that can, that can and should be achieved. I, Craig Chairman, Commissioner of Dixon County, on behalf of its citizens, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Fair Housing Month. As expressed, the hope is that this year's observance will promote fair housing practices throughout the county, dated 2nd April, 2015. Do we need a motion to approve that?
I'll move that we approve that. Second.
The move is second. Any other discussion? Not all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. Also, we have proc, resolution, proclamation to recognize April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
And there's some people here.
A couple here.
Okay, you. Young ladies there.
Yeah, come on up. I'll just highlight the, whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month calls attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every community and member of Dixon County, whereas rape and sexual assaults and sexual harassment impacts our community and statistics show one in five women and one, 71 men will be raped at some point in their life. Whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before the age of 18. Whereas young people experience highest rate of sexual violence in youth ages 12 to 17 were 2.5 times as likely to be victims of rape and sexual assault, whereas one campus, on campus, one in five women and one in 16 men are sexually assaulted during their time in college. Whereas we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, support survivors and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions. And whereas we must work together to educate our communities about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions and whereas Dixon County joins advocacy and communities across the country in taking action to prevent sexual violence. Now, therefore, it be resolved that we, Dixon County Commissioners, do declare April 7, April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, for liberal claim that each day of the year is an opportunity to create change for the future. Lynn?
My name's Maida Levine, I'm a sexual assault advocate for D-VAC, Dixon County is one of our 10 counties, so we cover this county also. Some of the events that we have planned are a candlelight vigil at Kansas Wesleyan, we partner with them during Sexual Assault Awareness Month and their students, so we'll hold that on April 14th. We also partner with KW and the Salina Art Center and we actually are bringing in the documentary called The Hunting Ground into Salina and we'll actually have two premiere dates for that. We're not sure what one's going to be open to the public or if both of them will, we're not sure yet, we have to see how many students are going to attend first because we want to open it up to all the college students. But that'll be April 15th and April 29th at the Art Cinema that will be doing that film. And then we're also doing the Kansas Wesleyan Health Fair, where we'll do information for all the college students there, so on that's April 22nd.
If, if there's someone, say, here in Dixon County that needs your services, is this usually a referral through the police department or social services or how do they get ahold of you and how do you, how's your outreach successful or what are you doing right here in our county?
Sure, the other thing is call our number. If they are not able to come to Salina, we do come into Dickinson County, we'll meet with them at a location they feel, say if we've actually met here in this building with individuals before, we just don't go to their homes, it's just something we're not able to do, but we'll come here if that's what works better for them or meet somewhere in between if that's what they want us to do, so. No referrals, they just got to call us and we'll figure out a way to get with them if that's what they need and. and come here if they need help with PFAs or any of those things.
And I, I recall from years ago on the United Way Board and some of the discussions that took place and that you've received funding, you know, here in Dixon County. But, but some of the key to this success was, was having a good support system. And so you as, as an agency can come in and be involved with the individuals to provide them counseling and safety and, and support.
Yeah, and we work with the schools. Yeah, we work with the schools here too, with the, the high school and Solomon High School. We try to get in and give information to the, to the kids too, because we know how important that is to, to start from that age. So, yeah.
Motion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'll move that we proclaim, declare April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Seconding. Any other discussion? Not all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
We should have two copies, just give them one.
Yeah, we got, we got them to the side. Can you, Brad?
Okay, just a couple of things to finish up. Just a note, yesterday was the first day of our countywide sales tax for broken bridges. That took effect April 1st. We should see the first revenues on that, member, in the next month. Distributions from the state, so we may not bother in the meantime. Here today's staffing reports will provide you a copy of that. Really the only change in the last month is the three positions the Sheriff's Department has hired. The two that, the two that were authorized, Garrett for the enterprise contract. And then they also have, actually they've hired one of those and two correctional people. They've had a couple of losses, but are resignations submitted. My understanding is they're going to, those people will be leaving, at least one of them will be. So they're, they filled a position where it was, they had a body, a viable applicant. So, that's, that's the three entries, all three in the Sheriff's Department. Have any questions on that, I'll try to answer it. Other than that, it's pretty static. I also wanted to note that, you might have mentioned it, but in Russ's report earlier, since March 1st, we've had 813 controlled burns reported to dispatch. Out of that 813, 15 of them were called in a second time because they went out of control. And we've had three structural fires as a result of out of controlled burns. So, again, since March 1st, been pretty active. It is still dry. I know in Solomon, we got some pretty good rain this morning, but I suspect about now, it's just as dry as it was yesterday, so people still need to use caution. So, the last thing that I had was, I just wanted to note that up in Tow Meets, the, Craig may be familiar with this since he, I know he goes up there for coffee, but I took a picture the other day when I was headed up to Manchester on some stuff. But the Tow Meets group, I told you before, they do a really good job of taking care of their community building. They put a new roof on the building here recently, new steel roof. They noted that Brendan told us they needed, the shingles were bad. And they had a couple of fundraisers, purchased materials. And then the younger guys in the group did the work while the older guys inspected, is, is what I'm told. And then the ladies fed them lunch and they made it, made a day out of it. But I was very impressed with the work they've done and the, and the volunteerism in Tow Meets again. So they, they really keeping that community building in shape. So, just as, just worthy of mentioning that. So, that's all I've got, I think.
The cost, I can't, it cost around 3,500 bucks?
I don't know what it cost. Just the materials was the cost and all the labor and everything else was donated. But they really come together up there with their fundraisers and, and the community for what they get accomplished. I'm just very impressed, so.
Thank Brad. Noticeance Communications. The K C C A Annual Convention, got to notice that to be the 5th through the 7th in Wichita. Would you get a K C C A membership, due notice, second notice? So.
You pay that?
Huh?
You have to pay that? I'm sure it's been paid.
That's what I figured. Got an invitation, celebrating the power of excellence. Please join us in celebrating the dedication and service of Dickinson and Sling County foster grandparents. The date's April 9th, 2015. And it's, the time is between 6:00 and 8:00 P M. It's at courtyard by Marriott, 320 Rysle Drive, Salina. I'm not sure who runs the foster grandparents program, you know anything through the?
Yeah, I really don't.
R S V P by 3rd of April, 2015. I'm not going to be going, I'm not sure. And then we've got the, I'm sure, I don't know if everybody got the, the North Central Regional Planning Commission newsletter.
I might take foster.
Okay. Yeah, you'll have to, R S V P by.
A grandparent of foster children.
Okay. That's all, notice communications. Introductions, Considerations of Resolutions. What do I do with that resolution? Oh, here it is. For the Board of County Commissioners of Dixon County, Resolution Number 040215A. Resolution establishing the appointment of the Board of Trustees of Dixon County Fire District Number Two. As set forth in K S A 1936 12A, establishment of District Board of Trustees, the Dixon County Fire District Number Two, Board of Trustees shall be appointed by the Dixon County Commission. The Board of County Commissioners hereby establish a Board of Trustees for Fire District Number Two. The Board shall consist of not less than three or not more than nine members who shall supervise and manage the fire to manage the interests of the said fire district and shall serve at the pleasure of the Dixon County Commissioners. Therefore, the following individuals are thereby, hereby appointed to Dixon County Fire District Number Two Board of Trustees with such term beginning the date of passing of the resolution until such time as the successor is appointed to fill the vacancy term. Larry Reif, representing Hope Township. Logan Reif, representing Banner Township. Larry Hoffman, representing Logan Township. Daniel Cope, representing Ridge Township. Mary Brockmire, representing Uni Township. Mark Beech. Beechey, representing Jefferson Township. Bob Sims, representing New Bern Township. If so be resolved, the resolutions shall take effect upon passage by the Board of County Commissioners of Dixon County, Kansas. Any discussion? Before we, everyone a motion, we'll have discussion. Do you have a motion?
Yeah, the resolution number is.
Oh, I forgot, you're already, okay.
I'll definitely do it.
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and make the motion that we do adopt Resolution 040215A. And this is for the appointment of Board of Trustees for Dixon County Fire District Two.
Move second, now any discussion?
You have any discussion on this or?
No, it's just, I mean, we're slowly proceeding through. All of this has taken a while, but I know we're getting well into this year and our district's actually going to start taxes, I mean, 2016. So, just trying to finish all my, all my checks in a row. So, I guess this was my next step.
You have an existing station in, you're going to, let me ask this, is there going to be another station built or not?
Somewhere in the future.
Okay.
Finding a.
Location?
Good location, funds to build it, things like that, yet to be said. So, but yes, hopefully planning somewhere in the future, yes. This is kind of, I guess, step two. Chad and his group's done an excellent job. It's been quite a battle to get to this point, to create the district, of course, last year. And now he's got, it looks like a good list of candidates to serve on the board. Then once this is done, of course, we're working with him and he's running and getting to get the two petitions done, as you recall, for, to straighten up the taxing district between us and Sling County. And it sounds like he's pretty close on the one getting Jefferson Township finished up as well.
Cleaning up lines.
Yeah, hopefully bring that back to you here in a couple of weeks. And then we've got the, the one up at New Bern Township to clean up as well. So, it's been a long time coming, but it's been a good project. Chad certainly deserves the recognition, he's done a lot of work on that, so.
Any other comments? If not, all the favors say.
Favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Thank you, guys.
Yep.
No unfinished business? No other business? Entertaining motion adjourned.
So move.
Seconding. Been moved in second, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.